He's a year older than, he's in a two year.
I know.
He writes for the six. You and I are. He's a. I was talking to her about. Now how very. Yeah. There is a baby stand. Her daddy set it up. Jump over it. My yard. Used to help my mom on the lawn.
Oh, you want me to do that?
I was ready. No, I don't. I'm not. It's a nice. It's right here. Some of them. Yeah. Sure. Yeah. When you're in. It's like. You have a show. We. Right.
Bryan High School Bears.
That'd be Chicago.
I'm a Bryan Bear tonight. There's more than East and West High Schools.
No, there's not.
In Bellevue. And they're gross, too. Both in my business.
That is true. You are right on that.
Good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty at six P. M. We will start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, and to start us off, we have the Arrow of Light Cub Scout Pack four sixty-four with Den Leader Alicia Cave. That will be followed up by the invocation with Father Tom Jones from the Church of the Holy Spirit. So if you would stand up for both of those, I'd appreciate it. And you want to come forward?
Okay, salute. The flag.
Flag's over there, guys. And girls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for helping us with that.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather to conduct the business of our city, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Give our city council members discerning hearts as they listen to those who offer witness about the issues at hand, and enable those who approach the council to state clearly their thoughts and concerns so that our council may fully understand and properly assess the community impact of the options before them. Guide our council to make wise decisions in the work they do this day. Choices they make are made with right intentions, with a mind towards the proper stewardship of the public resources they have been entrusted with, and in the best interest of those they serve. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of our fine city is more important than our differences, so that working together, we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey and those who depend upon us to act faithfully and responsibly. Finally, Lord, bless all who gather in this place, that they may all know your love and grace, and knowing it, embrace it, share it, and let it be what guides us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Father Jones? Susan, would you open the meeting with a roll call, please?
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item number five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. So we have five A, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns. Any questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Anybody want to remove anything? Councilman Burns?
Mayor, I'd like to request that we remove the contract for City Administrator Risto.
Remove eight A?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we take a motion to approve the agenda, removing eight A.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing eight A.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Any comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seven, we have no, well, we don't have a special presentation, but I want to thank the pack for coming here and starting us off with the Pledge of Allegiance, though. Appreciate it. And you don't have to stay throughout the whole meeting if you don't want, so leave any time. Takes us to item eight, organizational matters, eight A, approve and approve the amended city administrator contract and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Shannon?
I'd make a motion that we approve the amended city administrator contract.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Comments, questions? Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I have a few comments. So I think approving a ten point nine-two percent raise is a big deal. A large increase in vacation hours, which can also be paid out, is also part of this proposal. I'd like to point out that this looks bad when we are in the middle of an economic crisis and pandemic. Some of our constituents would be lucky to get a raise. Some are unemployed at this point. And I think that this is one of the many reasons Bellevue gets a reputation for being an insider system. Although we like to think those days are behind us, they may still exist with different players. I'm not in support of this, and I don't think you guys should be either.
I have some comments. Was there any council members would like? I appreciate your words there, Councilman Burns. When we brought on Mr. Risto, we did hire him at an exceptional value, probably way undervalued as far as I'm concerned. He did give us two years of great leadership. He's guided us through the floods, COVID. We have not dropped a beat, and I actually think the city is off on a new direction, and it's an impressive direction. I think he's, I think he's very worthy of, of being paid a salary that an average administrator would be paid after a two-year period, so. Respectfully, but I think we have to respect Mr. Risto's performance and his, his value he brings to the city. Councilwoman Welch?
Mayor, I'm going to concur with what you're stating. I know that in talking to department heads, people that work for the city, they are very happy to have the leadership of Mr. Risto. I know for a fact that there's many times he's not putting in the eight-hour day. It's the sixteen-hour days. It's seven days a week. He's, he's dedicated himself to the city to get us moving in the right direction. He has taken your vision and worked on implementing it. He's taken under personnel situations and taken care of those, and there's a lot of people in this city that feel that he definitely has their back. And for that reason, I would support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Councilman Shannon?
City employee salaries, including the city administrator, set by salary surveys, and Jim was brought on way under the pay scale. When he started, this raise still leaves him under the pay scale. And I will concur with the comments of the mayor and, and Councilwoman Welch. We, for the first time since I've lived here, have leadership in the city administrator position, and, you know, that is a great thing for Bellevue, and I, I, I think if we want another ten thousand, you would probably get that support, but I appreciate that you were willing to settle here, and I think this is well deserved.
Thank you. Councilman Stinson?
I think it would be helpful with the public. I understand what Thomas is saying. I think it'd just be helpful on letting the public know how you came at that figure, on what you did to come to the figure that we're at right now.
Yeah, so basically, I had Ash, Ashley, Human Resources, run some comparable cities to find out what that, what an average administrator would make, running a city of this size or from our comparable scale. I didn't get aggressive on it. I just said the average. Jim has given us a couple of years, you know, can't go back for reimbursement of not being paid enough, but I think he's very worthy of at least being paid what an average administrator would be. I think he's performed an exceptional job, and he's above average, in my opinion. So we just went with the average of comparable.
Okay, so.
And, and just for the record, Andrew Melo was at one fifty-eight plus benefits.
No, I, I understand that. I just wanted the public to know why you, how you came up to that figure, so it just doesn't look like you pulled it out of the air. And stuffs.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm in support of this also, and I want to make a few comments. When I first came on the council, we had a city administrator that, I don't know what occurred, what happened, but emails, phone calls, messages were very, very seldom even returned. Very frustrating years at the beginning that I was on here until that position changed to another person. And I will tell you what sticks out with me and Mr. Risto, for Mr. Risto is that. And I know the mayor was behind this, too, but these annexations that we completed, we had not done that for years. We'd go grab a little piece here and a little piece there, but we got real aggressive. And I, I think for me personally, that has put the city into a position of really moving forward. We, we had a lot of people that were living around the city, having all the advantages of the roads and going to our businesses and stuff like that, and I know a lot of them would say, why go to the grocery store in the city? Well, that's part of the plan. Grocery stores or, or movie theaters don't pay for all the bills that the city has when we're trying to repair roads or in our parks, we're trying to do parks. So I think the, the annexation was huge. Jim has also had a couple of issues, and the flood we had, two thousand nineteen, I think he dealt with that very well. We also, I know everybody's experiencing COVID nineteen, but I think we've been right on track with that. I just, I did ask Ashley to do what, what the mayor was talking from. I don't know if we used the, I used, had Ashley use the cities that we actually do comparables for our employees for paying benefits, and this just puts Jim into that. I mean, from being low, it puts him into it, the comparables, I think it's nine other cities, that I don't know if we're going to use them for this time around for negotiations, but I could tell you, probably at least for the last contract negotiations, we use these same cities for pay and benefit reasons for our employees, and I think it's only fair to see where Jim would fit into that, and I don't have a response with me. I apologize, but I, I believe a response was we're putting him in the middle, or we're putting him into, you know, in between the top and the bottom, which I think is the only fair to do, thing to do, so. From my standpoint, and I'm going to even throw Rusty in this, too, our mayor, but Jim has been available for anything at any time of the day. Of, hey, can we have a meeting? Hey, will you give me a call? Hey, I sent you an email with a whole bunch of questions on it, and I get a response almost immediately, which never happened before, especially with, when I came up first on this council. So I think he's worth it. I think he's doing an excellent job, and I hope that he continues to move the city forward.
Thank you. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the comments, and Thomas Burns, Councilwoman Burns, thank you for standing up, taking a position that may not be popular. I think that's a good example for the young people here. You take your stand. If you're believing in something, you say it, whether other people are going to agree with you or not. So I respect that you take that position. I respect that you're concerned about those right now that are struggling. I too share that. If this were to take any money away from anybody that was struggling, and it wasn't either or, I would have more credence that I would lend to that. In this case, I think we need to reward good performance. And from my perspective, Jim Risto has done exceptional performance, but in addition to the actual performance, I think it's the style that he uses that is also impressive. He doesn't get rattled quickly. He listens to people. He takes things into account. He deliberatively makes decisions that are clear and wise decisions. And I think that kind of leadership sets a very good example for the rest of the city and for the employees that we have. So the style, as well as the performance, I have found to be exceptional. This increase, although it seems almost ten percent like a lot, it is, but it's over two years, which would make it about five percent a year, not quite as much. But it is still almost five thousand dollars under the mean average of the comparables. So we haven't even gotten to the middle of the pack with this salary, and because he started low, and I respect that the mayor started a little bit low to have that test time, but the time for test, I think, is past, and I think the test has been very successfully passed, so I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? And Jim, just a final word. Really appreciate the work you've given the city of Bellevue these last two years. It, it has been challenging times, and you rose to the occasion. You, you did an exceptional job, so. With that.
We've got great people that work here that they quite job a lot easier, so. Within my. Truly. Be that good if I didn't.
So we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
Yeah, five yes votes and. Five yes votes and one no vote with Councilman Burns voting no.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Can we get a pin and pop his ego after all that?
Yeah. We don't, he, he doesn't have an ego. All right, moves us to number nine, approved citizen communication. We did not receive any. Item ten, liquor licenses, ten A, recommend approval of application for John R. Fritz as the new manager for Aldi Inc., doing business as Aldi forty at twenty-one twelve Cornhusker Road. Are there any representatives here from Aldi's? And we had asked, we had told the representatives, unless we asked separately, that they don't really need to come during this COVID pandemic, so. So with that, I'll open up the public hearing. So if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak regarding the liquor license for John R. Fritz, please come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing in need of motion. Councilman Shannon?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval of the application of John R. Fritz as the new manager for Aldi Incorporated.
Okay.
Say.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Prester. Are there any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item ten B, recommend approval of application for Jennifer B. Miller as the new manager at the Come and Go LLC, doing business as Come and Go at one three nine zero five Williamsburg Drive. Again, I'll ask if the, any representatives are here for the liquor license. And I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this liquor license or against for Jennifer B. Miller? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Control, Liquor Control Commission, the application of Jennifer B. Miller as the new manager at Come and Go LLC, doing business as Come and Go at one thirty-nine zero five Williamsburg Drive.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, there are no third readings this evening. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing. Second reading, twelve A is ordinance number four zero zero three. There was a request from the applicant to table this until October twentieth, two thousand twenty.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. So a motion by Shannon, seconded by Stinson to table ordinance number four zero zero three to the October twentieth, two thousand twenty meeting. Any questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve B, to allow for statutory changes and revisions to be incorporated into several sections of the city code which have been affected by or generated by legislative changes, and to add or change legislative citations. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend or revise certain ordinances which have been affected by or generated by legislative changes, and to add or change legislative citations.
Thank you, and I will open up ordinance number four zero zero six for public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Seeing nobody come forward, I will close the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Okay, the third reading will be held October sixth, two thousand twenty, here at the council chambers. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen A, ordinance number four zero zero seven, an ordinance to amend section six dash one one seven of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the regulation of B's violations, revocations. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four zero zero seven, an ordinance to amend section six dash one one seven of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to same violations, revoca, revocations, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held October sixth, two thousand twenty, at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Go ahead. Councilman Shannon?
Yeah, just for our scouts in attendance, what we're doing with the last two items and the next three items is the state legislature has updated state law, so we're updating city ordinances to match the changes in state law. So you're hearing a bunch of statutes, a bunch of things going on here. That's all we're doing is keeping everything in line with the state statutes.
Thank you for that. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four zero zero eight, an ordinance to amend sections nine dash seventeen and nine dash eighteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to elections. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero zero eight, an ordinance to amend sections nine dash seventeen to nine dash eighteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to proceedings for election and notice of election. Repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide for an effective date of this ordinance.
The second reading and public hearing will be held October sixth, two thousand twenty, at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen C, ordinance number four zero zero nine, an ordinance to amend section, sections fifteen dash one nine four of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to unlawful acts, sale or rental. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero zero nine, an ordinance to amend section fifteen dash one nine four of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to unlawful acts, sale or rental. Repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading will, and public hearing will be held October sixth, two thousand twenty, at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen D, ordinance number four zero one zero, an ordinance to repeal section twenty dash five of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to swearing, cursing, et cetera. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero one zero, an ordinance to amend section twenty dash five of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to swearing, cursing, et cetera, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held October sixth, two thousand twenty, at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen E, ordinance number four zero one one, request to rezone Lot One Riverview Heights replat four, being a replat of Lot One Riverview Heights replat three, and Lot Six Riverview Heights replat from RE and RS one twenty to RE for the purpose of an existing single-family residence and small subdivision plat, Lot One Riverview Heights replat four. Applicants, Tom and Mary Hanson. General location is five one three Ridge Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero one one, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 513 Ridge Road, more particularly described in section 1 of this ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held October 6, 2020 at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Ordinance number 4012, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 1001 Fort Kirk Road North, more particularly described in section 1 of the ordinance, to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held October 6, 2020 at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Item 14, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. We have none this evening. Item 15, resolutions, 15A, resolution number 2020-36, amendment to the master fee schedule. Councilman Shannon?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve resolution number 2020-36.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Shannon?
I would make an amendment to resolution number 2020-36. Last council meeting, you recall, we leased Hayworth Park. So my amendment would be to strike the fees out of our master fee schedule so that we're not causing confusion between the city setting prices and the new business that's taken over Hayworth Park, setting their own prices. So this amendment will be to strike the fees for Hayworth Park from the master fee schedule.
So we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister, to strike the Hayworth fees from the master fee schedule. Any questions or comments regarding that? Councilman Shannon or Preister?
And then, Mayor, I would just ask you or the administrator, I don't assume that we're making any plans in the future to take back over the campgrounds. So and if we did, this could be re-implemented and add a different number in there. But is there any reason not to do this from your perspective?
I don't, I don't see any. I mean, we'd, we'd just soon have at least for a long time. So. Reed, do you have any comments on that?
No, I think it's a good decision to remove it right now. So it's not conflicting with the lease. And in the future, if we take back over as a campground, then we can always put it back at the master fee schedule.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments on the amendment? We have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister, to approve 2020-36 as amended. Any questions, comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I have support to do it, and I haven't had the opportunity because I didn't have all the data. But I looked at one other change that I was considering, and that's for the fireworks ordinance. We currently are in with a couple of other cities at the rate we charge the fireworks distributors. And we're at $1,000 currently. Springfield is at 2,000. Omaha is 2,500. Gretna and Papillion are each 1,000. La Vista is interesting. Instead of the 800 that we charge the nonprofits, they charge all of their nonprofits 2,500, which seems unfair to the nonprofits to me. I'd rather lower the nonprofits and charge the distributors. But because we haven't had much opportunity to talk, I'm not going to offer the amendment. But I've gotten a lot of complaints this year about fireworks, and I will be contacting all of my colleagues individually about what we can do to reduce the problems for our veterans, the pet owners, the waste that's left out in the street, the stuff that gets down into our sewer system, into our wastewater. It's becoming a very serious problem. And I think as COVID and other things happen, people have more need to get out and express themselves. And unfortunately, this year, it was a very destructive negative. But I will do that separately, but I do want to make everybody aware. We're, we have two people at same, Gretna and Papillion, but we've got our two of our other neighbors, Springfield and Omaha, that are already at 2,000. And in fairness, we probably should raise the distributor fee. But I'll leave it at that comment for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Any other comments or questions regarding the master fee schedule? Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister, please vote as amended.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 16's current business, 16G, request the city council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the city of Bellevue and MMC Mechanical Contractors, Inc., for the replacement of the boiler at 1500 Wall Street, not to exceed $29,996. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve 16G. Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister to approve. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 16H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a permanent sanitary sewer easement between Sherwood Properties, located in part of lots 1 and 2, Hidden Hills, second edition. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16H.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. And then item 17, administration reports. I asked Mark Albert to come talk a little bit about COVID to give the public an update on that as well.
Hey, good evening. The mayor asked me to give you a quick update on COVID as we moved from phase three to phase four yesterday. So we'll be brief. We're rolling along really well tonight. But if you have any questions, I'll, we're happy to answer them. We continue to meet once a week with the health department and our neighbors, other cities, county, the base, to go over just current issues. It's been pretty status quo. We did move from phase three to phase four in the simplest of forms to explain that. Everything that was in the governor's directive of health measures, which was a mandate, if you will, has pretty much essentially, I'll move to guidance, if you will, which is run by the health department. So nothing has essentially really changed as far as how we should be behaving and what we're doing. It's just whether or not that's unlawful as opposed to against the guidance. The numbers are trending in the right direction for us. According to health department, I actually visited with her this evening, Sarah at the health department. The seven-day rolling average is continues to trend down or flat in our region, Sarpy, Cass Health. The positivity rate, which I pay a great deal of attention to, is trending in the right direction as well. August 15th, we're at 11.1%. And then this last week, ending September 12th, we're at 6.3. So again, that's going in the right direction. Big conversation they have right now is the vaccine. It's kind of a national conversation. They're hopeful that it will be November of yet this year, that we might be starting to see some of that. So the health department is working, we had a meeting this afternoon, about how we roll that out and do mass vaccinations when that becomes available. It'll be done in phases. There'll be small amounts initially that will, that will come to us. And then as it becomes bigger numbers, we'll be able to do probably like drive-through type pods, if you will, where we, where we vaccinate folks. But that's very infant stages, but we're having those conversations already, how we're going to do that. Likely a venue here in Sarpy and a venue in Cass. Lastly, second to last, I guess, phase four, the question is, how long does phase four last? Phase four lasts for probably quite some time. There's no discussion on an end in sight as to when that would be. It probably is going to be dictated by, again, positivity rate and the vaccine when it becomes available. As long as we do not have a run on hospitals or those numbers of hospitalization, if that stays where it is, and it is continuing to stay flat, they've been able to handle that, especially with our ventilator use, we'll probably stay in phase four. And they're pushing, what we pushed from the very beginning, washing your hands, keeping your distance, wear a mask when you can't be six feet away from people. If you're sick, stay home. And that's kind of where we're at. We're doing really well as a city. I think we're in good shape as far as how we're handling it internally. Don't have any real concerns about it right now. So.
Good.
Any questions about that?
Any questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
And just to, the reports are due the first meeting of the month, so we'll enter those next, next meeting. And just reiterate what Mark said, you know, I'm out in the public a lot, and people are respecting people's distance. And I'm sure they're keeping good hygiene, and they're wearing masks when they can't. So good work, Bellevue. Keep it up. And Captain Darby Lee? One, one last thing. Can you? Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister? Please vote.
All voting yes.
6:37, we're out of here.
Wow, that's quick.